Good evening. My name is Ron Lawrence and I'm your police chief here in Costa Mesa. I'm proud to be so. And we want to thank you for joining us. Animal control in the city of Costa Mesa actually falls under the jurisdiction of the police department, so that's why we're here hosting this. And I want to start by introducing our mayor, John Stevens, is here. He joined us. Welcome, Mayor. And Councilmember Lauren Gamaros is here. Thank you for joining us. And thank all of you for joining us. I want to start by introducing Captain Vic Bakula. He is in charge of operations, so he oversees animal control. And I want to thank him for all the hard diligent work that he does here in Costa Mesa. We are absolutely animal lovers. I've got two golden retrievers myself. And so the care and concern for our pets and our communities is really foremost to us as well. And I live here too. So I'm a Costa Mesa resident and it's important for me just as it is to you that we maintain a safe community, not only for our families but for our pets as well. So Captain Bakula has done an outstanding job with our animal services unit and also maintaining a very positive relationship with the California Department of Fish and Wildlife, who I also want to thank their positive relationship with us, an ongoing relationship. And I'll let Captain Bakula introduce them and get us started here.
Thanks, Chief. First, I'd like to introduce Dr. Quinn. She's talking. Other she is. All right. Dr. Quinn, she's a California expert on coyotes and rats.
And lives next door to Costa Mesa.
And she lives in Honey Beach, but she plays in Costa Mesa. And then Janet Mudson is our lead volunteer for Costa Mesa and coyotes, as well as Chip Openlander is with her. And then we have Dave Dodge, who's on his way out just from helping us. I was asked by the chief of police to do an update at the request of the mayor by someone having coyote concerns. We usually have our coyote awareness month is April. It was adopted in March of 2019, our coyote management plan, and then our annual updates every April. We're doing a mid-year update. We missed our meetings this year, so I'm going to go through some slides. And then we're just going to go right into questions because that's, I think, what most people want answered, not hearing a bunch of us talk. Go ahead, slide, please. Here's our coyote management plan. Like I said, March 2019, it was adopted. And here is our strategies. And we wrote this plan with the assistance of Dr. Quinn and the California Department of Fish and Wildlife. And this plan is very similar, if not exactly, to Newport Beaches and Still Beaches and Fountain Valleys. So we're all very, and Huntington. We're all very similar. We have a regional approach. We reach out to mainly Newport Beach on a quarterly basis to ask them about their coyotes. We also have the ability to go into this coyote catcher. And we're able to look into the area codes around us, the zip codes around us, and look at their coyote activity as well to see if ours is unusual. Slide. Here's our coyote activity in Costa Mesa. I took it from, it's from January to November 2020 versus this year. And last year, we had a pretty good reporting last year. I think it's because everybody was stuck at home. So they were definitely vigilant. People were going on a lot of walks and seeing more coyotes, a little more coyote activity. And then this year, we've had a, so far this year, we've had a 54% reduction in coyote activity and reporting. Slide. Okay, here's our coyote activity this year. And if you pay attention, the green, obviously, there's a legend. But if you see, they're pretty much spread out in those areas where there's wilderness areas. Fairview Park, you have golf courses to the north, and then you have the Back Bay in the south. And slide. Compared to 2020, and there's a lot more activity in 2020. Yeah, we have Talbert, Fairview, et cetera. And if you go up just where the triangle is up there, just to the south that, there was a lot of construction going on in the freeway. So they're coming along the outside of the freeway in and out of the neighborhoods, the coyotes. We were tracking them. I'm going to be done and then we're going to go right into questions. Slide. The city of Costa Mesa has a balanced management plan. If a coyote is habituated, that means it no longer fears human beings. Or if it has killed a pet that, in the presence of a human being, that is under the control, such as a leashed dog, then we're going to go out and we're going to trap that animal and then we're going to euthanize that animal. And there are the areas we've, as you can see, Fairview Park into a neighborhood, and then a lot of them were around the fairgrounds. Because the fairgrounds wasn't being used, the coyotes were zipping in and out of the fairgrounds all over the place. Became a natural habitat for them. And if you look, that's where the concentration of our euthanized coyotes came from. And they were all trapped by Anna Rodriguez, or hit with a dart. That's Anna Rodriguez for animal control, senior animal control officer. And we ended up trapping the animals and then euthanizing them, or we shot them with a dart if they were so inclined. Some of them were injured, but the majority of them were habituated. And the majority of that was due to people feeding them. That's a huge problem in the city of Costa Mesa. There are people out there feeding coyotes. And then a coyote gets to know, people feed me, and then they come up to other people and wonder, why aren't you feeding me? So that's what we have. Slide. What? Can't hear me? Okay, I'll take my mask off. No problem. My pleasure. Okay, and then here we have coyote awareness month is April. And then we have two meetings. We had two meetings, but hit one more time. Sad. Cancelled due to COVID. And slide again. But here's our good news. We have two meetings scheduled. Dr. Quinn's going to come back. And then in that meeting, she'll discuss the biology of the coyote. And then Janet will come and help us also on how we're going to control coyotes or manage them. It's really a management thing. It's both humans and them. We have to get them used to doing things and being afraid of human beings. And I am going to open it up to questions. Slide. That's it. That should be it.
Can you go back to the slide that showed all the coyote sightings? And then point out where Vista Park is? I lived there.
Vista Park, okay. So there's Victoria. There's, go back one. Go back again, sorry. I mean, go forward, sorry. See, okay, see Victoria right there? See at the end?
Right there. Now pay attention.
Now pay attention. A little click. Go ahead. Go back.
Back up.
Yep. Let's see. Yeah. There you go.
This is 20 and this is 21.
Yeah. So that's it. Right there. So a lot in 20, not so many sightings in 21. But the most, if you go back to 20, if you go back to 20, please. Okay, if you look at it, most of those sightings are all just sightings. But that's where coyotes live. They live in that Fairview, Talbert, San Ana River bed. That's where they all live. I'd imagine there'd be a bunch in this area. And also on this side, because they're coming up from the Back Bay area also. When we find them, like, we found them oddly enough, we found this group of actually, unfortunately, cats being killed at like Orange and 20th. And we thought, what a weird place. But then we found out somebody was feeding coyotes, feral cats, excuse me. They're feeding feral cats, which was bringing the coyotes in because there was a food supply that are right in the middle of our city. And I think we've controlled her because those, we've spoken to her and threatened people with different things. Feeding wildlife is against the law. And now that area is kind of clear in the middle. So that's pretty good.
So what's the best way to report a coyote sighting?
That's like a perfect question. The best way to do is either go to the city website under Coyote, and then it'll take you to the coyote catcher. It's an app that Dr. Quinn developed. And it'll give you a laundry list of questions. And that app goes to Dr. Quinn's research teams. And it also goes to the city of Costa Mesa, because we look at it every month to track our coyote activity. And anything that you request to be contacted on, you'll be contacted on. As would you like to be contacted? Yes, and we'll get you right back. And the coyote catcher gives you a myriad of information on how to deal with coyotes and how to report them. And then if you go to our city website, it has our management plan that has backyard checks, et cetera, on how to haze coyotes.
So other than humans, who are their predators or their animals?
Well, they're the apex predator here. Other than, the only thing they're afraid of is humans. We have people, we've had someone out in Fairview Park. I'm going to say, not very intelligently, let their dogs play with coyotes. And the coyote, it was a good, I think it was a golden retriever, and it followed it in back, and then two other coyotes attacked it. So they're looking, we're not sure if they're attacking him because they're attacking him or if they just want to get him out of the way so they can eat other things. So they're going after small dogs, 20 pounds and under generally, cats for sure, and everything in between, fruit trees, et cetera. It's all in the coyote management plan. It'll tell you if you have a backyard checklist, write down the checklist, it'll tell you exactly how to make your yard not so coyote friendly. Hope that answers your question.
Do they like fruit trees?
They love fruit trees.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. They wait for them to drop avocados.
Oh, okay.
They don't climb the trees that they...
So the most preferred prey item of Southern California coyotes are rats, rabbits, and cats. And so if you get rid of the rabbits, they'll just eat the cats and the rats. And if you get rid of the cats, they'll eat the rabbits. So they're omnivorous. They'll eat whatever is there. But they do, they're their most preferred mammalian prey items. So if you manage the rabbits, they will just eat something else. Yeah. And it may even make them eat more cats. I don't know. We haven't actually looked at that, but that is a good question. Any more questions?
How do we control the population of coyotes?
You can't. You just can't. You have to control your own behaviors. It's impossible. Now, if every city in every county in California made an aim at population reduction, you might have a chance. But there is just so many coyotes everywhere that they're just, and they can travel, it kind of depends on what's in their habit, but they'll travel. And so what we're seeing from our own collared coyotes that are in LA County is that they're using flood control structures. You can see it. I was looking at the map up there and I was wondering, like, they're traveling through Fairview Park, Talbert, they're using the flood control channel, they'll use the easements, the right-of-ways. And they use even small drainage ditches that are at the back of people's homes. They'll use railway lines. They use everything. And they're just, they're just really able to travel. And so I know there's a lot of people that don't want coyotes in your neighborhood, but there's a lot of things we don't want in your neighborhood, and it's just almost impossible to get rid of them. I think the most important thing in this city is that the city is sticking to its management plan and it is, you know, taking out the ones that are aggressive and that are not going to cause any additional, I don't know what you want to call it, like problems. I mean, every coyote is kind of a problem, but that's a coyote just being a coyote. This city appears to be taking, getting, taking care of the coyotes that are not acting like they're supposed to, which is a lot more than many other cities, to be fair. Well done.
They just seem to be around more.
Yeah, there's definitely, I would say it seems like there are more. You know, at least anecdotally, it seems like there is either, you know, they're at higher densities, they're expanding their range. You know, I'm obviously not originally from Huntington Beach, in case you haven't noticed. So I haven't been around that long, so I don't have a historical perspective. But Dave Dodge grew up with the dinosaurs, and he tells me that there's definitely more coyotes in California than there used to be. Right? I mean, they're just in cities that, you know, and then, you know, social media can make them more visible as well. But I would say that people that have been in this area for a long time, you know, you're not scientists, but I believe you when you say that there are more coyotes here. Like, you know, there's more cars, there's more coyotes. And they're very well adapted to urban areas. And a lot of people say that the drought pushed them down here, and it may have, but, you know, it doesn't matter now. They're here to stay. They're not going anywhere. I don't see any city that is successfully trying to eradicate coyotes. Some cities do have active trapping programs. But, you know, police put criminals away, but does that mean you're going to leave your house unlocked and your car unlocked? Because, no offense, they're not going to get all of them. And that's exactly what would happen if there was a lethal control program in the city. You'd still have to have a wonderful catio or keep your cat inside or keep your dog on a leash.
It's probably on the form of a sheet, but can you just share with our residents what's the prevalent time of day that they like to roam? And what can somebody do when confronted with coyote that's being aggressive?
Well, I'll answer the biology question, and then I'll hand it over to these folks for the other question. But coyotes are not nocturnal. And so if you see a coyote during the day, it's just being a coyote. You know, it's the same way, like, I like to be tucked up in bed at nine o'clock and himself is still wide awake at one o'clock. Right? I can't stay up that late. But it's different with coyotes. Coyotes will be awake when their prey is awake. And because they're opportunistic, that can switch. So you could have a coyote that could be nocturnal and a coyote that could be diurnal. So they can adapt very well. And so a lot of people say that they can see more coyotes during the day, and that could be just because there's more coyotes. Or it could be because they've shifted their behavior because there's different food available. And if you think of it, when the captain was talking about the feeder, that would change the behavior of a coyote. Right? So that would bring coyotes into an area. Feral cat feeding is a disaster for a number of reasons. But from a coyote perspective, at least our research is showing that areas that have feral cat feeding are exactly the same areas that coyotes like to occupy. And so that's not good. And, you know, if you have a feral cat feeder in your neighborhood, I'm not really sure what the city's policy is, but you could try and encourage them and tell them that it's not good for their cats' welfare, like they're just feeding cats to the coyotes.
About hazing. Hazing, you could do a variety of different things to haze a coyote away. The city of Costa Mesa's come up with these fantastic cans, and it's got a bunch of different information here about coyotes on here. Are these still available from the city?
They are, but we need to make some more. We were ready for a November meeting. We're ready for April.
So you can just get any aluminum can, put some coins, put some, you know, nuts or bolts in here. Noise maker. I'll tell you, you know, I walk my dogs late at night, and one of the things that I carry is, I went online on Amazon for 20 bucks. It's a flashlight. It's got a stun feature on there. And not that I'm going to zap it with the stun, but it's just the sound, because it's not a typical car horn. It's not, you know, maybe a noise that they hear. It's not me yelling, "Ah, run." They're used to that. And they become, you know, you know, they tune it out. They become immune to it. So I activate that little stun feature and that crackly electric sound. I mean, I literally had five of them run one night because they were like, whoa, what is that? And they took off running. Because it's not your typical beep beep or me yelling. So there's lots of different things out there that you can get to haze coyotes. You can carry an umbrella. You can carry a golf club, a walking stick, a water gun. We don't recommend pepper spray or any odorant that's going to go out, because you have to think of it, if it's windy and you're near an elementary school and you blast that coyote with the pepper spray, let's say, and now it blows onto the playground, now what have you got? You've got a bunch of elementary school kids exposed to the odorant. So, I mean, naturally, if it's your life or the kid's getting a little blast, you want to protect yourself. But, you know, so have to think about your surroundings. So that's usually the stuff that we don't recommend is the sprays, just because you don't know where they're going to go and you don't know if it is going to come back in your face. And now you've got a very upset coyote, and you can't even see it because you've just blasted yourself with the spray. So you can't protect yourself, you can't protect your pet, and now you don't know what's going to happen with the coyote because now he's angry. Does that make sense? Sir, did you have a question on hazing?
Is there any kind of deterrent that we could put around our yard, like a spray for certain rodents, you know, keeps nails away? What's up?
You know, people have said try wolf urine and ammonia and other things. And the problem is, is like Dr. Quinn said, they get used to things. And then they go, hey, there's no wolves around here. I haven't seen one. I haven't smelt one. They keep coming back. So there's really not an exact deterrent. I like to recommend the critter ritter. It's a motion censored sprinkler. It's definitely kept the raccoons and opossums out of my yard. I have what Neve was calling with the wildlife highway behind my house. It's a flood basin, so it's quite frequent with rodents and whatnot to travel through, coyotes, raccoons. And I just picked up, love my Amazon, it's a motion censored sprinkler. You attach it to your hose, and when something runs past it, it blasts it. And no animal that I've ever seen likes to stand there and take a blast from a water hose. So I've had it in my yard for over a year, and I haven't seen a raccoon or an opossum or a coyote in my backyard for that matter. I've seen them in the front. Maybe I need to move it to the front, but I haven't seen anything in the back. So there's different things that you can try outside of stinking up your yard with other odorants.
What about your fence?
Well, you can, I mean, I put a fence topper on top of my fence, and that's one thing. You can't just throw up on your fence. Make sure that the city's codes are saying that you can have your fence so many feet higher than normal. But I put a fence topper on that's cut down some of the wildlife. You know, and then you can also put up coyote rollers, depending on, again, your height. That's not a wildlife roller. It's just a rolling system that you attach to the top of your fence. And what happens is when the coyote or any other wildlife grabs the top of your fence to try to leap over, that roller pushes their feet back off your fence. Does that make sense? So they're going to reach up and they're going to slide up because the roller's going to keep rolling. It's not going to, they're not going to have that steady object to catapult themselves over.
My neighbor did it with piping and a piece of PVC. And the PVC rolls on the steel, and they can't get in.
So our Fish and Wildlife website, our KeepMeWild.org website, there's a link in there that has various companies. It's not anybody that we completely recommend or say, buy this coyote roller or do it yourself. But at least you could go on there and see what it is and see maybe how to make it yourself or look, it'll point you in the direction to look for companies where you can get a roller. Their success rate, I can't tell you. That's not something I've studied. I don't know if Dr. Quinn has, but, and she's saying no, she hasn't. So, you know, anything is worth a deterrent to try to keep them out of your yard is what I try to keep any wildlife out of my yard. Yes, sir?
So, Dr. Quinn?
Yes.
You mentioned a few times feral cats. I think Vic mentioned two. So we consider, through our animal control, our animal services committee doing it, it's called a TNR trap neuter and release. City should have that. Does that affect your coyote behavior?
TNR is a bad idea. I don't have anything good to say about TNR. TNR will just give your predators more things to eat. Their cats are an environmental disaster. They're going to kill all the wildlife in the area that you might want there. They have diseases like endemic typhus that you're going to give to your residents, your city staff, and also leptospirosis is going to get into the food chain. Yep, feral cats. Then the trap neuter's success rate is too low generally. It doesn't account for incoming, unneutered cats. It's not a good idea. Don't do it. I don't have anything good to say about TNR, anything. Yes, sir? Yeah. You can ask other people, but most, if you reach out to Orange County Vector Control, they'd say exactly the same thing. But your cat people will obviously advocate for it. But it's not humane. I guarantee you that cat advocates look after the cats very, very well, but they will end up in the inside of the belly of a coyote. And so will other people's pets as a result. Yes, sir?
How about trap neuter release for the coyotes?
Just because the coyotes have no balls doesn't mean that they won't eat cats. Simple as.
Just keeping the population down?
Doesn't matter. It'll do the same thing, probably. Coyotes will just come in from other areas. You don't know how it's going to affect the behavior of the coyote. Neutering could just make them even, you know, move less and eat more in the one area. We just don't know. But it's not, they won't stop eating cats and dogs. They just won't.
Have there been attacks on humans?
Yes.
Not in Costa Mesa.
Not in Costa Mesa.
I heard there was one like down in Michigan.
Oh, there's like, Orange County and LA have more bites combined probably than the rest of the, than the entire country potentially. So Southern California, LA, Orange, San Diego probably has more bites on humans than the entire rest of the nation combined. I don't know why. Could be population density of coyotes, could be population density of people, it could be just people not knowing how to interact appropriately with wildlife because we're very urban. But there have been bites in several of the cities in Orange County. Irvine gets a lot. They win. You know, we've had ones in, do you guys remember? Anaheim recently, fairly recently, Fountain Valley. But the Fountain Valley one wasn't a bite, they don't think. Yeah. Well, no DNA evidence, so hard to prove it. Yeah. And so a lot of them are on provoked, some of them are on children. The ones that are on children are pretty scary. They're ambush attacks, so usually around the head and the neck. It's happened in Irvine.
Meeting's been involved somewhere along the line.
Yeah. So a lot that...
Coyotes have been fed one way or another, either directly or indirectly along the line, that has led to the investigation we've done. As an example, last year in Orange County, you guys, I'm Dave Dodge. I'm just a guest. I'm a guest today.
You're the people.
You're the wildlife watch guru, and you're just here supporting us.
You guys, last year in Orange County, there were four bites on humans that we, oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, you got to get the camera.
I didn't realize I was going to be on TV, you guys. Last year in Orange County, there were four bites on humans that we investigated. In LA County, there were five. This year, Janice and I talked about a month ago, and if I remember right, in Orange County, there's been seven, but there were...
In Orange County, and I believe we're at three in LA County.
Okay, so eight and three. And if I remember right, Janice, there was some Boy Scouts, two or three Boy Scouts that were bitter in one incident. So, you guys, but when you stop and think about it for just a minute, as bad as those bites are, we have hundreds of domestic dog bites on kids every year, you guys. Think about it for a minute. There's 7 million people in LA County, there's 4 million people in Orange County. It's 11 million people, and we're talking about less than 10 bites. It's almost unmeasurable. Now, believe you me, those are the bites that we've investigated with a warden. All right? I'm sure there's probably been other bites that have not been reported to us because it's not a requirement in the state of California for medical facilities to notify us when there's been a bite on a human. And that's unfortunate. And maybe someday we'll get that changed. All right? So right now, we're not being notified. And unless the good cities like Costa Mesa, like Newport, like Irvine, unless they call us and get us involved, we want to be involved in a couple reasons. One, we want to understand the bite, the situation, and everything that led to it. Number two, we want to find that animal. We want to find the offending animal. The state's policy is this, we will not do coyote animal control. State's not in a position to do that, folks. We're not going to do that. What we will do is this, when there's a bite on a human, the state will find that offending animal, we'll remove it. We'll put it down. And as you know, there's no relocation of coyotes. Okay? They're euthanized. Okay, they're euthanized, they're put down. That's our policy. Now, interestingly enough, 4152 in the California code gives you, the resident, the right to hire a trapper and actually trap. You could do that. Your homeowner association could do that if you think it's important and it's prudent. The only thing the state of California asks is please use a licensed trapper. They understand the law, they've taken our tests, and we know who they are. We've looked at their traps. We've made sure that, that, that they'll, they'll do it humanely. They'll put the animal down humanely, all right? And that's the only request that we have. But yeah, you have the authority. You could hire an individual, an individual homeowner resident could hire a trapper to trap on their property. There's some requirements, 150-yard rule that does lead to some interesting discussions from time to time, meaning, let's say you want to hire a trapper. The code reads, you need to notify everybody within 150 yards of that trap that you've set a trap there. You don't need to tell them where the trap is, but you need to tell them the reason why.
Do I have written permission from the landowner?
Huh?
Do I have written permission from the owner?
See? So that's it on coyotes. But believe you me, folks, coyote bites are bad, and every one of them that we've investigated sooner or later has led to feeding. Somebody has fed that animal either directly or indirectly, and just quickly. Direct feeding is people actually putting out bags of food for these animals. You know who the biggest feeders are? The senior population. You know who the next biggest group of feeders are? The homeless. Every time the police department goes into a homeless encampment, the coyotes just scatter. Couple of years ago, I went down to Santa Ana. I was able to ride with local Santa Ana PD. They cleaned out a couple of homeless encampments. I wound up going to Santa Ana that year, nine different locations in the city of Santa Ana, talking about coyotes. Why? Because the coyotes just spread out looking for new meal, new, new resource, new food opportunities. They're, yeah, they're actually putting, yeah, they're putting bags of food out. Yeah, you bet.
Yeah. In Costa Mesa, we've had several residents putting it at the end of like trailheads, and the neighbors have been really good about calling us on them. And we've put up operations to try to identify these people. And the majority of our coyotes that we've had to euthanize that have been habituated, meaning no longer afraid of human beings, have been fed. Fed or injured, those are the two. There's no one, there's not like the angry coyote coming out in Costa Mesa that's coming out to get everybody's cat. Like Dr. Quinn said, it's normal coyote behavior, but abnormal behavior, such as not being afraid of a human being or approaching humans, such as Fairview Park, where people were feeding them by the picnic tables. So the coyotes said, hey, there's food at the picnic tables. And unfortunately, we had to euthanize two, capture and euthanize two coyotes that were in that area. And we put up signs telling people not to feed wildlife, period. So we haven't had any bites in Costa Mesa. And we're following our management plan. Dr. Quinn?
No, I have nothing on that.
Oh, good. I was doing that over here, too. Yes, ma'am.
When you say Fairview Park, is that kind of the same as Teewinkle?
No. Fairview Park's over, you know where Estancia High School is? Right back of Estancia High School, that's Fairview Park. And that's Fairview Park, and then you go down, that's Fairview Park. And then if you go to the south, it eventually turns into Talbert Park, which is a county asset. But we also patrol that area with our park rangers as well. And then Teewinkle. And if you looked at our map, we've unfortunately taken two it in that area. And then any of them that were, we've tracked back that are habituated back to the fairgrounds, we've euthanized them as well. Sir?
Do the eastern ducks provide food for the coyotes? Do they eat ducks or geese?
I have never seen so much goose poop in my life as there is at the schools in Costa Mesa. Like, it's insane. I think it feeds the rats, potentially. But I, that's a good question. We do not test for goose poop in our diets. They don't eat that many geese because they're kind of hard to catch. But I don't know. But there is an insane amount of geese, like insane. Like, I'm, like, we work in a lot of schools in the Newport Mesa School District on other stuff, and, yeah, it's kind of gross.
I just got back from South Dakota, and they will try to get a duck or goose. But what the ducks and geese do is they put sentries out. And as the flock is feeding, they've got their sentries. And as soon as their sentries spy or see a coyote, they notify everybody to take off.
But do they eat the crap? Have you ever seen the meat? Have you ever seen the meat do crap? No? I've never seen it, but that doesn't mean it doesn't happen.
Yeah.
So Lauren, I see this at the golf course. So at the golf course, if you see a coyote and there are geese, the, exactly what you were saying, they'll start to, you do, you know, whatever, do their calls or whatever. And I don't, you don't know what they're doing. But now I think I know what they're doing. They're just warning everybody else.
Everybody eats, the sentries watch.
Yeah.
Then they switch off. The sentries eat, and they put new sentries out. But they're always watching, you guys, always watching. And then if you'll notice when they sleep, many of them sleep on the water, okay? Coyotes can't get to them.
Right.
Or an island, island in the water, right? Most of our parks that have ducks have an island in the lake.
But they do eat some birds on the golf course, not necessarily geese, but they do eat some birds.
They will get birds from time to time. They'll get birds, but not ducks and geese, usually. Very unusual.
But in that particular park, Teewinkle, there's a lot of homeless people, and people live in their cars, and they just leave everything trash. Yeah. There's a lot of rats in that area as well. So rats are my thing. Coyotes are like my side hustle. And so there's a lot of rats in that area, like, like surprising number, and not just in the fairgrounds, in other areas in that locale as well. And so we know that coyotes eat a lot of rats, and so we're working on it. There's four less this week there anyway, I can tell you that much.
Isn't it easier, though, for the coyotes to get cats rather than rats? I would think the rats would be...
I don't know, to be honest.
Scamble away quickly.
There's probably more rats. So there's more rats than there are cats. And there is equal amounts of rats, like coyotes, rats, and rabbits are kind of equal in their prey preference.
Oh.
And but obviously, there's more rabbits and more rats than there are cats.
Yes.
So, but cats are not outdoors all the time. And so, you know, it's just, and there are roof rats as well, like they spend, they're very good at evading predators, but they all...
And they, well, they, they also live in the palm trees, too, the rats.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. So, but they should be able to escape. I don't know. We didn't, it's kind of a new discovery, that coyote tracks, to be honest with you. We didn't really know. But they do, and we know that.
Anytime we find a, if we, if we euthanize a coyote, or if we find one that's been injured or killed by a car, we bring it to Dr. Quinn, and then she'll tell us what the contents of the stomach are, give us a little further information on what kind of, if that is, has been being fed human food, like someone's been feeding it, or is it eating pet food, or is it eating cats, unfortunately, or dogs, unfortunately, or rats?
I witnessed someone in a lawn chair at an undisclosed location feeding the coyotes. I mean, I've seen this a couple mornings. What do I, the guy is not someone I would want to approach. He's possibly...
Call or dispatch, yeah. I know Cindy knows it. Now, believe it, any, with anything, like someone feeding a coyote, we hate to hear the report 20, 30, 40 minutes later. We want to know when it's happening then. Just like people say, oh, I saw somebody trying car doors on my street, but I didn't want to bother the police. That bothers us. We'd rather be able to get the person doing this and take a report than just take a report about it. So if you ever see anybody feeding a coyote actively, call dispatch, and they'll send you an officer, an animal control officer that's on duty to go take care of that.
Do you have animal control officers on duty at night or on the weekends?
On the weekends, yes, but not always at night. But we have animal control officers that are on call. But an officer can handle someone feeding a coyote as well as a park ranger. And if it's definitely, like you're saying, in the morning, generally, right? That's when we have, right, we have park rangers, animal control, and regular police officers on duty, and our community policing unit. So we have, there's four teams that are ready to go down there and take care of that issue. Yes, ma'am?
I live in Newport Bluffs, which is over by Bison and MacArthur. And we have bombarded with sightings over the last, let's say, two or three months, but it keeps getting worse. And I don't think that they're doing anything about it.
Well, a sighting of a coyote, especially Newport Bluffs, that's right at, that edge is right up to the Back Bay. You're right at the edge of the Back Bay, right there. The Back Bay is a beautiful habitat for coyotes. And that's where the majority of ours from the east, on the east side of our city come in, and you're on the west, and you're on the west side of the bay over, or east side of the bay, excuse me. And they're coming up the bluffs and looking in those neighborhoods. I haven't really looked at 92660, I believe that's your zip code. I haven't looked at that in a while. But if you leave your card, I could look at it anecdotally and tell you.
Well, it's getting really bad. I mean, almost daily, we're getting messages, text messages from the administrative office saying, another sighting. Send them mine was walking along a walkway about 7:30 last week, three coyotes, the walking ahead of them.
I see coyotes every, I drive to work along Irvine, along the Back Bay. I see coyotes every morning, walking down the footpath, walking our, when I used to run to work, I used to see probably five coming all the way from, like, by Newport Harbor, and then seeing them in the Back Bay. So they're out there, like Dr. Quinn says, it's whether their activities are improper.
It's gotten a lot worse. I've lived here for two years, and we never had to follow what happened right now.
You can call Newport Beach Animal Control, and they'll go and come out and talk to you about it. Newport Beach Animal Control? Because their, their animal control is also under the police department.
And they can take them under that?
Well, they'll, they'll take whatever their management plan tells them to do, just like we follow our management plan.
Do you know what Thompson's like?
It's, if you took out Costa Mesa from ours and put Newport Beach, it's pretty much the same plan.
I heard that they're on Bellbo Island. I mean, they're pretty smart. They come at 1:00 AM, and they go into Bellbo Island and look for cats.
They do, but you also have to remember, I'm just speaking about coyotes in general. We've, we vilify the coyote a lot of times, but also the raccoons are out there also. And they kill cats. We found that also, in Costa Mesa at least.
So will coyotes kill raccoons?
I don't know. That's pretty even fight right there.
Not really. Yes and no. Like, they will, but they're not. It's funny, you know what? And this is anecdotal, so like I watch cameras all day, every day, looking at coyotes, paying the backside. But they, a lot of the time, we'll see, and I'm trying to think of the word, but it's too late, and I haven't eaten dinner. Like, there's like partitioning, right? So you might have one over the other sometimes, and like, you will get the two of them sometimes at the same place, especially if there's a lot of food. But a lot of the time, they, like, they're both, like, kind of omnivorous carnivores, so they're both going after the same thing. And usually, that's enough to kind of split them up a bit. Or what you get is you get them at different times. So like, we, for example, like, we have cameras at an airport in Los Angeles, and we were trying to catch two coyotes, but we caught one coyote, we collared it, and we never saw any raccoons. Now, the coyote has since left, and now there's loads of raccoons. And so it's kind of like this nice separation type idea, cat, the birds just left my brain.
Maybe they follow each other around.
I mean, they could do, too, but, you know, they do have, like, usually if you get, like, predators, and they kind of are, they're kind of scavengers, predators that eat the same thing, you usually don't get them in the same place.
And in Costa Mesa, we have huge raccoons. They're big. Anna?
This year, I've, I've seen a lot of, a lot of deceased teenager raccoons that have been killed by coyotes.
I, I heard on Bellbo Island, it happened on the street I was on. A woman got between a mother raccoon and their babies. That's not really germane to this, but the woman decided to get a rabies series. Now, is rabies an issue with either of these animals?